Okay, uh, good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for joining us. Today is the Board of Adjustment Study Session. Today is February twenty second, two thousand twenty-three. And let me go ahead and pull up the agenda for today. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
I can.
Okay. Perfect. Before we get started, um, I would just like to take this opportunity to introduce our newest board member. We lost Lee and replacing Lee is going to be Bonnie Paulus. So Bonnie is happy to join us and uh, take over the, the role of um, of Lee's chair. So, um, welcome again, Bonnie, and appreciate you having here. Okay, um, getting back to the study session. The first item we have are upcoming cases that we potentially could have for April. Um, the first one, and this is in no particular order, um, is a parking lot located at nine ninety North Benton. And for this project, the applicant will be requesting a variance to allow the height of a proposed garage to exceed the maximum height allowed. Um, the second that we have coming up is a residential project located at five forty-nine East Lester. Um, it's currently developed with two residential units. Um, the applicant is applying for a lot split. And as a result of the lot split, one of the lot not be meeting the minimum lot size requirement. So the applicant is going to be requesting a variance for the lot size. Uh, third item we have is the T E P substation located at forty-three oh five East Grant. And the applicant is proposed to raise the height of the wall along the south side of the substation. Um, I believe that's adjacent to Grant Road. That's the wall facing Grant. Um, to a twelve-foot-tall wall. And then the last item that we have for potential cases is a project located at ninety-one eleven East Magdalena. And the applicant is going to be requesting a variance to allow a storing to exceed the maximum height allowed for an accessory structure and to allow the total gross floor area of the accessories to exceed fifty percent of the gross floor area of the residence. Um, so those are the cases coming up. And again, that's looking be projected for the April twenty-sixth hearing. Um, if you know ahead that you will not be able to attend that hearing, um, please let me as possible. Um, so we can just make sure that we do have a quorum. Um, number two on our agenda is of for today's case is our case discussion. And I will go ahead and turn that over to Wyatt.
Thanks, Mark. Um, today's case is C ten dash twenty-three dash oh one casino storage, Grant Tower ten LLC, located at thirteen eighty-eight West Grant Road, zoned I one residential. For I one industrial, um, the applicant's property is an approximately zero point nine acre lot zoned I one. And as current developed, the applicant is proposing to construct a new seven-story storage facility. Uh, the applicant is requesting the following variants um, to allow the construction of a seven-story storage facility with the reduced side street perimeter yard setback from seventy-three six inches to forty-five feet as measured from the back of future curb location along the Interstate ten frontage road as shown on the submitted plans. Um, PDSD has no objection to the applicant's requested variance. And to date, we have received a total of zero approvals and zero written protests.
Does that complete the staff report?
Uh, that is correct, yes.
Okay, we may have a couple of questions for you. I, I personally uh, uh, have one at least, and that is uh, as you state, the variance is from the required uh, building setback of seventy-three feet, six inches, which is equivalent to the height of the building. But you didn't indicate to what? What, what is the actual setback from the edge of the of the I ten pavement?
Sure, so um, that should be towards the existing curb along the I ten frontage road. Um, typically, we consider frontage roads to historically follow street and routes setbacks. So in this instance, it's going to be the setback required would be um, uh, twenty-one or the height of the building, whichever is greater measured to the back of existing or future curb location. So it would be the curb along Interstate ten frontage road.
Not, not sure I follow. What, there is a setback from the edge of pavement of how many feet according to uh, the standard regulations?
Uh, to the frontage road, Mr. Chair, is, am I understanding your question correct?
Yeah, the question is, we know where the required setback is measured from, that being the curb or the edge of pavement, whatever. But by how many feet? That's the question.
Is reduced?
You're saying it's reduced? I don't follow.
Correct, reduced from seventy-three, seventy-three feet, six inches to forty-five feet, zero inches.
To forty-five feet, so it, so the building will be set forty-five minutes, forty-five feet from the curb.
Mr. Chair, that is correct, yes.
Okay. Um, you know, I was looking for that in the documents that were submitted. And maybe I didn't see it, but I did not find um, any map that had that dimensioned, that, that distance dimensioned. Uh, not on the submitted plans or any attached drawing. Uh, did I miss something? Was that submitted and, and I just didn't see it, or was that not actually submitted?
Mr. Chair, I believe that the development package um, shown on the left-hand side of the screen maybe does not show that reduced back dimension. But from the Planning Center's um, application that they've submitted, they have clarified that they are reducing their setback to forty-five.
Mm-hmm, okay, okay. All right, very good, um. I believe that's all the questions I have personally. I'd like to turn to the other members of the board and ask if any of them have any questions. And so I see a hand. And Ms. Paulus is uh, quick to learn the hand. So, uh, Ms. Paulus, uh, the floor is yours.
Um, since I'm new to this process, I just had a couple of basic questions. If a variance is granted, does the variance run with the property or is it contingent on the plan that was submitted? So for example, if later on, the developer decided they wanted their building eighty feet tall, um, are they still given the forty-five-foot setback, or do they need to come in for a new variance?
Ms. Paulus, if they were to come back and ask eighty feet, a reduction from eighty feet to forty-five feet, then a new variance would need to be granted.
And what if they change the location of where they want to put their building on this property?
Ms. Paulus, I don't believe that the location would matter, but I do believe that we would be look for at uh, just the setback requirement as measured from the back of curb location.
So is a variance um, ever conditioned with the stipulation that it adhere to the development plan at the hearing? That was presented at the hearing?
Ms. Paulus, that should be.
Um, and one last question, how do you define one story? Um, it looks like a seventy-three-foot building is seven stories. Would a seventy-six-foot building be eight stories? How is it defined in the code?
Ms., I think this would be um, a building code question um, related to structural headroom for a story. I'm not sure that the Unified Development Code or our zoning code stipulations regarding um, height clearance for, for each individual story of a building.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you.
Any uh, other members have any questions? No, um, I think uh, all, those are all the questions uh, the board has for you. So we are, we're done from our side.
Okay, um, if there are no other questions, um, before we take a break, before the public hearing starts, I just want to remind you that we do have election of officers today. Um, so that after roll call, that will be the second item on the agenda. Um, so just think about that. And um, so let's go ahead and take a break, and then uh, we'll see you back in ten minutes here.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess uh, the ball's in my court. Let me ask Ms. Hamblin for a uh, a roll call, please.
Michael Marks.
Here.
Bruce Dawson.
Here.
Jesse Lugo.
Here.
Miranda Schubert.
Here.
Irma Duran. I see Irma's iPad, but we'll come back to her. And Bonnie Paulus.
Present.
Irma, could you confirm whether you're in attendance?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have room.
Okay, very good. For the benefit of those uh, in the virtual audience, I have a few prepared comments I need to make first. I should indicate at the top, my name is Michael Marks. I'm the chairman. Uh, and I'd like to uh, call the meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the City of Tucson's Board of Adjustment. This meeting is being recorded, and by joining the meeting, you are giving consent to that recording. Uh, we have one item on the agenda today. After that case is introduced, staff will present its staff report. Board members may then ask staff questions. After that, the applicant or his or her representative will have time to speak. Other people, first those in favor and then those in opposition, will have an opportunity to speak as well. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. Throughout this period, board members may ask questions of the applicant and other speakers. When all of that testimony is completed, the board will close the public hearing, discuss the matter, and then vote on a motion made and seconded by more board members. All of those who wish to speak will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. All of those wishing to speak other than the applicant should indicate that wish and your name and address in the chat feature. All presentations today must be directed solely to the board and not to staff or members of the audience. And all must be related to the case at hand and not to any other matter. For those who wish to speak, we ask that you be brief and to the point. Repetition of testimony already given by other witnesses is not necessary. If necessary, I will invoke a time limit for all speakers. Please remember that all testimony given today must be given under oath. And a reminder, please be sure to mute yourself and turn your camera off unless you were addressing the board. The decision of the Board of Adjustment may be appealed to the Superior Court of Pima County by filing a complaint for special action with the Pima County Superior Clerk's Office within thirty days of the board's decision. For additional information on this filing process, please contact the Superior Court's Clerk's Office or an attorney after today's public hearing. At this time, I'm going to ask staff, city staff to raise their right hands. And you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you very much. Then I think I should turn to Mr. Castro or Mr. Berger if uh, he is the one that will do this and uh, for the purposes of giving your staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, point of order, please.
Yes, go, go ahead.
Don't we have elections of officers?
I did not hear that.
Do we have the election of officers on the meeting agenda?
That is the second item on the agenda.
Ah, my apologies.
Okay, Mr. Berger, why don't you proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Castro.
The uh, ele- election of officers should occur before the first case.
Oh, I thought we had briefly talked and that was the, the uh, second item. So, so we do need to take that up, and I apologize, uh, Bruce.
No problem.
So in other words, we should move right to that item, and that is an item that I have to find another. Okay, so then let's uh, let's take that item up first. And uh, this is the first regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment for February twenty twenty-three. Uh, the rules of the board require that a chair and vice chair be elected to serve for the next year. Um, I'd like to start with nominations for chairperson, and I do want to uh, step out of the role as kind of the moderator and indicate my, my preferences, and that is um, I am very willing for somebody else to uh, step into this role for this coming year. So um, I encourage any uh, of you to uh, uh, volunteer or to nominate uh, some other party if you wish. If there is nobody uh, that steps into that role, I would uh, be willing to take that on again. So uh, I open the uh, floor up to anybody, any member that wishes to uh, make a motion.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, I would nominate you because I think you do such a great job at it. I think you should just continue on.
Well, thank you, um. Now, I'm not quite certain, under normal circumstances in a uh, while we're dealing with a variance request, any and all motions have to be seconded, but I don't see in this uh, cheat sheet that I've been given by staff that there is any mention of a second. Can I digress and ask Mr. Castro, does that motion have to be seconded?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Okay, is that?
I will second that nomination.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. And it's been seconded before I call for a vote. Is there any other motion that any other member wants to make this point? Well, hearing none. Uh, let's proceed with the vote. All in favor, uh, say aye.
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 All in uh, opposed, say nay. Well, hearing none, um, the motion carries unanimously. And so um, I will be the chairman. And I gather that motion is effective, that, that decision is effective immediately. So I am the chairman for this meeting because of that vote. So given that, let's move on to the second item. And that is the uh, one and only case on the agenda, and that one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, we need a vice chair, nomination for vice chair.
Thank you very much. I do need some help here today. So, um, is there a motion for a vice chairman?
I would continue in that role if you would like.
Well, I will uh, make the most.
Make myself, I guess.
Yeah, I'll make the motion uh, for Mr. Dawson to be vice chair this coming year as he has been. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, here's a motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, uh, the motion carries unanimously. So, that takes care of that, that first item, I believe. Then we can move to item number two. And let me uh, let me ask staff, is Mr. Berger gonna be making the presentation today?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, why don't you proceed with the uh, uh, C ten dash twenty-three dash oh one casino self-storage slash grant Tower ten LLC at thirteen eighty-eight West Grant Road.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the board, today's case is C ten dash twenty-three oh one casino self-storage, Grant Tower ten LLC, thirteen eighty-eight West Grant Road, zoned. Um, the applicant's property is an approximately zero point nine acre lot zoned I one in industrial zoning classification and is currently undeveloped. The applicant is proposing to construct a new seven-story storage facility. The applicant is requesting the following variants. One, allow the construction of a seven-story storage facility with a reduced side-street perimeter yard setback from seventy-three feet inches to forty-five feet as measured from the back of future curb location along the Interstate ten frontage road as shown on the submitted ends. The engineering section of Planning and Development Services has no objection or adverse comments. PDSD staff has no objection to the applicant's requested variance. It is the opinion of staff, there are special circumstances applicable to the property. That granting of the variance will constitute a grant of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone in which such property located. And that the variance requested is the minimum needed to afford relief and the least modification possible of those U D C provisions, which question? To date, we have received a total of zero written protests and zero written approvals. Mr. Chair, members of the board, this concludes our presentation. We would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I do have uh, one that's just come to mind, Mr. Berger, and that is uh, has A DOT been contacted and have they uh, indicated their approval of the request? And and is there any information about any future widening of the I ten uh, roadway, including the frontage road in the vicinity of Grant Road?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, uh, A DOT has not been reached out to by staff regarding the grants, and there are no plans to widen this section of the frontage road.
Okay. All right. Um, let me turn to the other members of the board and ask, cause uh, do any of them have any questions for Mr. Berger?
I have no questions.
Sounds like there are no questions. Let me invite the petitioner to the front of the virtual uh, meeting room, and so he or she can uh, introduce himself, her or herself, uh, let me swear them in first and then uh, uh, provide us with uh, your input. So who might that be? Could you introduce yourself?
Uh, good afternoon, uh, good afternoon, uh, Chairman Marks and members of the Board of Adjustments. My name is Lexi Wellitt, and I'm a project manager here at the Planning Center. We're located at Two East Congress uh, here in downtown Tucson. I'm also joined uh, this afternoon by Brian Underwood, who is the Director of Planning here at the Planning Center, as well as Ken Perry and Natalie Wareman from Bowman Consulting, who is the project engineer, as well as Juan Turan, who is the uh, uh, property owner's broker uh, representing this project.
So let me interrupt, and could you uh, as well as uh, the gentleman with you, raise your right hands, and you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Why don't you proceed and uh, and tell us a bit about the uh, request?
Oh, absolutely. Uh, again, thank you all for, for having us. This uh, uh, Mr. Berger did an excellent job presenting the case, so I'll do my best to keep my remarks uh, to a minimum as well as answer the question you posed there, Chairman, uh, regarding communication with A DOT. So um, this project is, uh, that we're proposing is a, a self-storage project located on a point-nine acre property located uh, generally at the south or the northeast, northwest from this. My directions are off today. The northwest corner of Grant Road and I ten. Um, as you guys have seen in the materials submitted to you, this site is very irregularly shaped in that it's a flag lot that's industrial zone and encumbered by numerous easements, WAPA lines, et cetera. And so uh, developing this site has, has been a challenge. And so uh, when the property owner purchased this property, his vision was always to develop this with the highest and best use that uh, you know, creates a focal point for interstate travelers entering and exiting downtown as well as serves as a catalyst for development and redevelopment. I, I'm sure you all have seen in the news this week, uh, just Catty Corner across the interstate. They've um, started uh, demolishing the, the old Century Movie Theater there for construction of the uh, new casino down here. So this area is, is actively in process of redeveloping, et cetera. Um, and so looking at this site, you know, we were exploring what uses make the most sense. And, and due to, you know, the irregular shape, the, the high number of encumbrances on the site as well as the maneuverability internal and externally to access the site, uh, certain industrial uses, in fact, most industrial uses aren't really viable. And so we went to the table to look at uh, what uses are viable and commercial uh, or self-storage uses and, and commercial uses are typically what is, is most uh, feasible on this site. And so after performing a market analysis, it, it demonstrated there that there is a a severe unmet need for uh, self-storage facilities at this location. And so, and looking at, at uh, our site, we are proposing a seven-story self-storage facility that'll all be climate-controlled, everything internalized, and the building will contain four-sided um, architecture, et cetera. However, due to the uh, way in which the code uh, enforces a perimeter yard setbacks and, and this area is identified as a developing area, which requires that a, a setback be uh, equivalent to the height of the building. When we impose that setback, it really limits the developability of this property, particularly in the most buildable area. Um, so what we are asking is for reduction in that perimeter, uh, that street perimeter yard setback from it's a overall reduction in twenty-eight feet, and that's to be consistent with um, some of the other uh, parameters established for establishing areas, et cetera. And really what our hope is, is that by bringing this uh, building a little bit closer to the, the freeway frontage there, that we'll be able to activate that, that frontage, um, et cetera. So the request that's before you is to um, allow for a twenty-eight-foot reduction in that, that street perimeter yard setback. And to answer your question there, Mr. Chairman, as to whether or not ADOT has been contacted. ADOT is one of our neighbors. Their maintenance facilities are located to the west and north of us. So through this process, we have been working very closely and I believe Ken Perry, if necessary, can elaborate a little bit more on that, but we, we have been in contact with them and they've expressed no issues with the reduction in the setback or any necessary need for widening the road there. So from, from ADOT's perspective, this reduction in setback is, is appropriate. So with that, I will turn it over to the rest of the board there for any more questions you may have for us. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, I here is Mr. Perry can elaborate on the the potential modifications to I-ten along the frontage road. If he has talked to ADOT, I, I would like to hear that.
Yeah, hi, this is Ken.
Yeah, Ken, if you can, I, I don't see you, but to swear you in.
Yeah.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, then why don't you proceed?
Okay, for, so for along I-ten, we have coordinated with ADOT because we have to go out and actually tie into a sewer manhole. So they've seen our plans. They've seen the, the site plan and the buildings. They've given us permission to encroach into the right of way to get to the, the manhole. They've also, they're also on their west side. They have a storage facility there and they've agreed to actually let us, let the project stage on the property. And so they're pretty, they're real familiar with the project.
Okay, okay. So there are no plans to for that frontage road to encroach any closer to the subject property than is already the case.
You know, I, I'm, I don't know that for sure. I think it's built to its ultimate section, but I can't say that with certainty.
Okay, okay. Well, that, that's all I need to hear on that at this point. I don't think I've got any further questions. Let me turn to other board members. Do you have any for the applicant or her team? I see Ms. Paulus with her hand up, so why don't you take the floor?
I might just like to ask Ms. Willitt. It wasn't clear to me where the access, the ingress and egress points are going to be from this development. Can you point that out to us?
Absolutely, Ms. Paulus. Thank you for the question. I appreciate you being here today. Access to this property is, will be provided via an existing driveway and curb cut that is located on Grant Road. So it is a flag-shaped lot that has a relatively long driveway before you get to the, the triangle where the building is. So we will be maintaining that access point and bringing traffic from Grant. No access will be provided from the frontage road. Everything will continue to come up from Grant Road and, and working through the preliminary, this, the development package has been submitted on this site and DTM has found that the driveway separation and the use are acceptable for, for what it is we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let me, we're hearing none. We can wrap that phase up. And while I don't believe there are any for the record, let me ask, are there any other parties that wish to say anything on this case? Okay, well, there are none. So there is at least nothing negative to rebut, but if the petitioner feels it necessary to add any last comments, this is the opportunity. Otherwise, we'll close the hearing. So are there any last comments on the part of the petitioner?
I do not have any additional comments. Thank you all very much.
Okay, well, thank you. We'll close the public hearing and let me turn to the board members for either their discussion or for one of them to offer a motion.
Chair.
Mr. Dawson.
Yes, I really have no objection to this at all, so I would be glad to move to the motion phase. And I therefore move, we grant the following variance in the case of C-ten dash twenty-three dash zero one. Allow the construction of a seven-story facility with a reduced side street perimeter yard setback from seventy-three feet, six inches to forty-five feet as measured from the back of the future curb location along Interstate ten frontage road as shown on the submitted plans. Subject to the following conditions, there are none. The variance with conditions imposed will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other properties or improvements in the neighborhood and is the minimum necessary to provide relief.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dawson. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Okay. Ms. Schubert has seconded, the motion is made, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All in, all opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. So to the petitioners, congratulations. And to all others, to the board members, that completes the meeting. I will turn it back to Mr. Castro, although I do want to say one brief thing. And that I'd like to welcome Ms. Paulus to the, to the board and I've, I've known her for many years and I know she's going to do a great job.
Thank you.
So, so that, that's all I have to say today. Mr. Castro, you can take it away and close it up if you wish.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are no other items that we need to discuss, unless anybody else has anything they want to bring up at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, did we not need a motion to adjourn?
I thought he, yeah, we didn't need a German and we're still recording.
Okay. I think we can probably say that that was sufficient.
Mark, Mark Jesse Lugo, I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jesse. Appreciate it.